I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Mary Seminera.
Jane Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we have had some modification to our agenda. It was a very busy day in the office today. So, item number one, we will have to open the public hearing, but we have a request to adjourn it again. And then we will not be taking into consideration any discussion for items five, six, seven, or nine this evening. So, with that being said, our next two meetings are Tuesday, April 23rd, and Tuesday, May 28th. We do have one set of minutes to approve with some amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended from February 26th?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, I do have to open the public hearing, but there's nothing new on this. So, item number one is Appeal 3882 for Klaus Garage Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopeville Junction, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use and interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52 in order to continue the display of, the outside display of cars pursuant to Section 194-3, 194-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, again, knowing there's no new information, the applicant emailed this afternoon, said that he was going to, they're working on a new plan, and they're going to do a submission for next month. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this application? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we do have four items on for public hearing. Those are where we will have the opportunity for neighbors to comment on them. And then after that, we do have reviews, a couple of reviews, which are generally the first time, actually, for the two that are left, it is the first time that we will be seeing those applications. So, those are not ready for public comment this evening. So, item number, so another item number one, 3886, Morgan-Pina. I'm actually going to take items number one, two, and three together. So, the first one is Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina, 2 Kane Drive, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow a camper to be parked in their front yard pursuant to Section 194-52.1 of the zoning ordinance. The second, Appeal 3887, same applicants requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence, which is located in front of the front line of the house, a three-foot front line variance for the existing house, and a three-foot front line variance for an existing above-ground pool, which is one foot in front of the front line of the house pursuant to the schedule of Bulwark regulations and Sections 194-98 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. And Appeal 3888, same applicant requesting a variance to hold, to allow a shed under 144 square feet in size to remain located in front of the house pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open all three public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have previously reviewed this application. The applicant is here. So, the applicant came, approached us last year at some point with the application for the three different items. It's a corner lot, Kane and Lee Town, Lee Town Road. And so, the applicant has two front yards. He has, well, I guess the, somebody else previously in the house put an above-ground pool in, because I don't believe, Mr. Pina, you actually started the construction of that pool, right? I think the permit shows it was previously, there was a applicant's name on it. So, there was above-ground pool that ended up with the survey that we recently got being a half a foot in front of the front line of the house. So, that's why we have to deal with that one issue. But, that above-ground pool, the applicants have now since made that, in essence, an in-ground pool by filling in, putting a retaining wall in, and creating a patio extending into the front yard of the house. So, and then they put a six-foot white fence, which, by the way, I did a site visit. It's beautiful, there's no question. It's a very, very nice fence. The retaining wall is very nice. But it's awfully close to the road, so, you know, so that's it. So, that's the first, that's the first variance that's being requested, first and second. So, it's, we have the pool, we have the fence. The house itself, obviously, was built by a previous owner, so, but we did find with the survey that the house also extends closer than the 50 feet required. So, we'll correct that issue while we're here, so you don't have that issue going at any point in the future. There is an RV that is parked in the driveway, and there is a shed also, both of those located in the front yards of the house, again, on the side of the house, but in the front yard. So, we've had previous discussions about, by the way, there's also a playset. I needed to see whether the playset actually shows up on the survey. Just to make sure that the playset is... Sorry, I'm just going to take a minute to just see that. I actually don't have the survey. Does anybody have the survey? All I have is, oh, thank you. Playsets show up on here. Yeah, okay. So, the playset, we've already, I thought at one point we'd had a discussion about it. Yeah, could we please, because you can't read the measurements. But it is closer than the shed to the back line. So, it's 21.6 feet to the rear property line. So, that creates an issue. Okay. Again, it doesn't, it's not legible on the survey that we were given, the smaller version of the survey that we were given, so... So, okay. So, as I said, I did do a survey, I did a site visit just to be able to see what the, what the issues were, because obviously, we've heard some observations and, you know, heard some comments about this.
As I'm looking at the survey, I'm sorry, they have a railroad tie border, which might be considered a patio. I don't think that's the actual structure. The jungle gym, I don't think is within the 25 feet. It has a railroad tie border. I presume there's tire, or something in there that has a padding underneath the jungle gym?
It's not just wood chips.
Just wood chips? I don't think the actual structure is within the 25 feet.
That's 45 feet. And this is 25. But again, there's like a railroad tie or something.
All right, so maybe, is there a, is there a railroad area?
It's just railroad ties to keep the wood chips.
Okay, all right, so that makes it clearer then. So, then if the measurement to that corner is the 45 feet, the play equipment itself is further in. Okay, so that eliminates that issue. Thank you.
It's closer to, actually, this is 27, and this is further.
Yeah, but you gotta go by that.
Well, if you look at, no, I understand that, but look at it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, running across, so it's probably the same 27.
27 there, plus or minus 40.
And a playset or a structure in the backyard needs to be?
What?
This is 27.6.
25, not 30, okay.
If you bring it.
Or not 50, actually, a rear yard.
Not closer than 27 feet.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's closer.
25 feet away.
Yeah, it's more than 30.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, correct.
So, we discussed the camper, and you guys, you clearly say it's seasonal. You take it with your family. It's not there on the weekends often enough. I did happen to notice when I was there that there was also a trailer parked there. So, that was definitely another issue, but again, we're not necessarily here to discuss that, per se. The, so, there are some pictures here for board members of the... And then this is the, I'll share them with you in a second. That's the front view. One of the things I did want to point out, the shed that we're talking about has peeling paint on it. So, and it doesn't really match your house, all right? One of the things you hear us ask is the shed or the garage that you're going to put up, does it match your home? All right, so, again, you're asking for a consideration of a shed to be in a front yard. And so, it's one of the things to think about if you're going to repaint it at any point, can we have it match the house? I think one of the, one of the pictures, here. What the board needs to see is that the property line, where the stake was, is inside where the trees and the, when the stone wall is. So, and you can definitely see from the photo, just again, what I was able to take sitting in my car from the road, that it's definitely, they have difficult soil, which they did mention to us that the landscape architect that they were working with had identified. So, it looks like there's either residual building materials, gravel, or something like that, item 4, crushed stone, something there that might make it difficult. But, that marker, the survey marker, just gives you some sense of where the property line is versus where the stone wall is, okay? So, but the fence itself is beautiful. What you can see in that one, where I was actually, when I was parked on Kane, the one where I'm on the side of the house, is you can actually see the extent, the white fence and how it, how far out from the front of the house it is, okay? So, again, this is, you're welcome, Deanne, if you need to see the pictures, you're welcome to come up and look at them, but...
I would like to see them.
Sure. These are just other views. There was a very large tire, by the way, leaning against the back of the shed. Again, for a shed to be in a front yard, it was a really large tire back there, like a machine kind of tire. So, these are just... So, I do know that we, in the meantime, since our last meeting, we've gotten some letters from the neighbors, so we definitely appreciate that. I will read those into the record in a minute. One of the things that we were waiting for was a landscape plan. So, we were wondering if...
A couple of things. One is, I do have one other letter to add to the list of neighbors who support our variances. And this is from the folks at 1 Kane Drive, which is directly across from our property on Kane Drive. So, I'd like to...
Sure.
I think I made 10 copies, hopefully that's enough. But they would be, they would be looking, you know...
Down the driveway.
I was just wondering, in the matter of protocol, might it be good to hear from the neighbors who are here while we deliberate? I think they're here to support us. I think it would be good for the ZPA to understand what they have to say when you're looking at...
Can I ask you to be at the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
One of, how we generally operate is we get all the information out. We get it on the record, and then we open it up for comment. First, I would ask if the board members have any additional questions, and then we would ask if the...
Okay. Okay, I, we have, we have a landscaping proposal and a depiction, but we would like to talk about that. And we would like you to hear from the neighbors. And I couldn't agree with you more. The fence is beautiful.
Yeah.
I've been out there. The stonework is beautiful. So, I'd like to talk about the merits of that, you know, at the end. But I could submit something.
I'd like to see the landscape plan up front, please.
Sure, no, I said I would do it. Okay, hopefully, this is enough copies of it. Forgive me for putting staples on, paper clips on it. I think I have one extra to do it.
No, I think we're good.
Do you need another one?
We're good.
Okay.
So, this was prepared by Yedowitz and Ardsley, and it's a letter, and it's also a plan that shows a proposed location. The landscape professional touches on the issue that Norma mentioned about the difficulty with the soil. But I also think, again, I think I would, I would like to talk about this in a holistic way. And, you know, I've been out there, the fence, to me, is elegant. It's a high-end fence. The stonework is very well done. And I just, you know, when you look at the, what the ZPA looks at, the detriment to the neighborhood versus the benefit to the applicant, I'm not really seeing detriment to the neighborhood the way we have it now. But, understood that you have to look at that, and we asked you to hear from...
Is this it? Because we were actually more focused on needing landscaping on the other side of the yard.
This is it? On what side of the yard?
So that it was going to screen the camper and the shed. We did also talk about this fencing.
Yeah.
But we were more concerned about the shed and the camper.
Okay, what would, what would, what would screen that? What kind of, I mean, you know, the shed and the camper are... The only one who really looks directly at that is 1 Kane Drive, and if you read, he doesn't have any problem with the way it is now.
Are those the pictures? Because there's one picture that's straight on that shows the camper and the shed are...
The camper and the shed are visible.
Yeah.
But are they, are they, are they light? Are they detrimental? I don't think so. They're in the, they're in the proper place. When you look at all the constraints of the property, they're in the, in the proper place.
Okay, microphone, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We honestly don't see the need for that.
Oh.
Oh, do you want me to give you back one?
I think Chair would want to point something out.
I think this is the angle you're talking about here?
No, nope. I'm looking, if I'm, when I'm on Lee Town.
Looking at the forefront of the...
Looking at the forefront, exactly.
This is from Lee Town Road.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Where you see the peeling paint on the shed.
But again, you know, and we also have a letter from the property owner across Lee Town Road, who doesn't have any problem with either the camper, the shed, or the fence. This is coming from the neighbors, and I hope you hear them tonight.
Okay.
They're unanimously supportive.
Microphone. Oh, okay, so again, there's no, so there's no landscape plan for the other side?
No, we did not submit a landscape plan to show, to screen that. We don't think one is necessary.
But we did spend a substantial amount of time discussing it several times, and I don't know what part we were not able to communicate. I mean, I think maybe we made it very clear that that was some of these issues. If you want to look at back, go back and look at the record, review the record, we'll be more than happy to review it. I don't have a problem with that.
But, but I think you have to consider that we don't, we don't see there's any aesthetic or detriment the way it is now.
Okay, if you want to pursue that way, fine. I have no problem with that. If you don't, if you don't see a problem, we can continue. I see a problem, but we'll deal with it.
We can talk about it, but I, we don't see a problem.
If I could, there was a meeting where we brought a landscaping plan and suggested some screening between Kane and the camper, where that grass area was available. And we can continue to pursue that, but there were suggestions that we put landscaping in the middle of the lawn between Lee Town and the camper. And we didn't think that that was a viable solution because of movement of the camper itself and the use of the front yard. So, we didn't pursue that any further. But we did consider and propose landscaping between Kane and the camper. It will not hide it, and...
Never submitted a plan, though.
Well, we did. I have a plan. It was a full-size plan.
Do you have it with you?
I don't have it with me.
I don't remember seeing it.
I don't think really much of recalling it.
But we also had discussion about the fact that the plants on Lee Town did not have to be close to the edge, you were proposing them on the edge of the driveway, and we said they did not need to be there. They should be much closer to the rock wall, so that they're, in fact, bigger and screening better by being, right, much closer to the road.
I recall that discussion.
Right, which would then, in a sense, hide the front of the house, which aesthetically was also a concern for us, because then, the way the house is situated now, it faces Lee Town. And so, if you put screening in the front, in a sense, you're hiding the front of the house. So...
I don't know that.
And we looked at, we looked at moving, if you move the camper to the other side of the house, we looked at that as well, and there would be the same view to the public no matter where you put the camper. And that was part of the discussion. We looked at the backside of the house. We looked at moving it to the other side of the house. Because of the thin way the property is laid out, it didn't matter, it doesn't matter where you move the camper, it's going to be visible from the road in any, in any situation. So, we did, we did look at it. We want you to be aware that, you know, I know that I've looked at it multiple occasions to try to find a better location for it. But other than where it is, it's currently in the most practical, usable place. The only screening that I see as possible, I'm sorry, is between Kane and, and the camper.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Maybe there's miscommunication. It's always possible. But, Chair has essentially agreed that the work done around the pool is nice work, but that's the area you screen. Whereas the area where we have a trailer, a mobile home, or travel trailer, whatever you want to call it.
It's an RV.
A shed, RV, a jungle gym, all those different things on the other side is left completely open, mishmash of stuff completely open to view.
It's, again, because of the layout of the property. That is our backyard.
It's where, it's effectively...
Deanne, please get closer to the microphone.
Yeah, it's effectively the logical place to have that, and you'll hear that in letters from the neighbors.
That's not my point. My point is, why would you screen from view what everybody seems to be saying is at least nice work, aesthetic work, as opposed to the mishmash of things that...
First of all, I don't agree.
And hold on, and I'm going to offer one more photograph. This is that angle. And there's already a bush there, and there's already trees and rocks. It's, that's not the angle that we're worried about.
Yeah.
So, this is...
The angle you're worried about is from Kane or from?
Lee Town.
From Lee Town?
From Lee Town, the other side, though.
It's really, you know...
If there was a way to screen that...
Can I show you the differences? This is coming at the angle that you're talking about, okay? There's only half of the fence going back, and then it's a wrought iron fence, okay? It's, but there's already a bush here, there's already a tree here, there's already stone wall here. It's not so distracting to somebody driving on Lee Town Road. But this is the view from the other side, coming from the other direction. It's a big, white fence. And you know what? Fine, it looks beautiful now because you just put it up there. But what happens 15 and 20 years from now, when the next owners live there, and then the neighbors are not so happy with the condition of the fence, because honestly, it's allowed to be a six-foot fence that's there? So, that's what we have to take into consideration, not just the existing, brand-new condition of the fence, okay? So, that's part of what we're looking at, okay? But these are the angles that we're talking about. Do you notice which one does the white fence stick out more? That's what, that's, that's the point that I was trying to make with the, and the board. We've repeatedly made that point.
I don't know what the problem is with the fence. Are you saying it's like a, like people will drive off the road looking at it or something? I don't understand.
Back to the microphone, please.
The neighbors who live there, and it is a neighborhood standard under law, have no problem with it. You're saying people who drive by are going to be distracted by it?
It's not just a neighborhood standard, it's the actual law of the zoning that says you can't have a fence like that in the front yard.
There's a very...
So, now you're asking for a variance.
Right.
One of the things they can certainly consider is what the neighbors have to say. They're often guided by that. Right now, we're discussing something separate. We were hoping to see a landscaping plan that addressed the concerns that we saw as a board. And I don't know if it's wise just to dismiss it. It doesn't address the concerns that were raised. I don't know if we can plant it there. Can you plant it further down to the cane? What's the difference? Is there a big complication in doing that?
So, when we looked at the landscaping plan and we brought the landscaper, there were some themes that were very important to us. Again, the front of the house, we felt should not be blocked or screened. And so, the driveway naturally, because of the thinness of the property, also is not screened. So, there was no way to really screen that without screening the front of the house, as most houses are on any block, are open to the front of the road. And so, that was the side that we felt was important to maintain visibility out forward.
So, what you're doing is screening nothing.
Well, we thought...
You ask for a landscaping plan, and you're basically screening nothing.
They were...
They're coming down, I'm not sure which direction that is.
When they're coming from, from 52 on Lee Town, it screens out.
Which is the side that already has...
If you look at it, I mean...
That's on Kane, that's sitting on Kane.
Correct. And that's what we were talking about, screening.
Screening that side was, was an option that we had discussed at one point with another landscaping plan. I brought a full-size survey with plantings for suggestion on locations.
Which we said was, I don't know, you had things about why you couldn't do that. I think we're agreeing with you. That's the side we've always talked about having the screening. And again, you haven't answered the question that I've asked. It doesn't look to me on the front of your house, other than the fact that you don't think that that's beneficial, for some reason, to your property. If you put it to, when you're looking at the house, the left of the house, the house is still facing the front of the road, the direct frontage is still seen. What is the issue that you can grow there just as well? There's nothing big difference in the ground, or trees, or anything that's in that area. I don't know.
The, the corner was also something that we thought was not to be blocked, because the corner sight distance from making a turn out of the street was important as a safety issue to maintain. So, there were limitations as to how close to the corner. So, the screening ended up being more and more in front of the house.
Part of the problem I have with this landscaping plan, I really don't, doesn't have this whole survey and the length, so I'm not sure how much the left your property goes. But I, I don't think it's going to affect the sight view, but... Okay, so we clearly identified, I think you get from our discussion, that this is not what we expected. If that's what you want to propose to us, with the concerns that we've expressed to you and hope that you get the decision you want, you may, as Mr. Austin said, go ahead and forward with your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, anything else?
No, we've submitted our narrative. It shows, it shows, I have a pretty loud voice anyway, but...
It's not for the people in the room?
I got it. We submitted our narrative that supports, we believe supports, these variances. The situation with the house, the house was built in the late 1970s. At that time, I think it was R1. Somewhere in the early 2000s, I think they rezoned it or upzoned it to R3. So, you know, we see it more or less as a pre-existing, non-complying situation. So, we see that as a non-issue. We hope that the board will hear from the neighbors, you know, who, the neighbors who are most directly impacted by this, and understand this, and have lived there for years, so that you take those comments into consideration as well. And then maybe we can circle back and talk again.
Okay, because we are in, this is the first public hearing, just as part of the record, I just want to get a couple measurements into the record. So, the house itself, we determined the front corner that is the closest, and by the way, this does include the overhang. The 47 includes, is 47 and a half feet, which is why we needed the three-foot variance for the existing house.
Right.
Not, you know, again, the current applicant didn't build it. They bought it in this regard, so, you know, I don't think anybody here has any issue about that. The issue is that there is a, an in-ground pool, well, a pool that's been put into the ground that is 47 feet from the property line.
Right.
Okay, so it's actually half a foot in front of the house.
Right.
But then the applicant, even after he was, after he was told by the building department... But then the applicant, even after he was, after he was told by the building department to stop work, continued to build a patio, and then built a retaining wall, and then put a six-foot fence on top of the retaining wall. So we're not just talking about a six-foot fence, you're actually talking about a multiple extended.
I'd like to-
That, hold on, please, okay? And this extends out to 26.4 feet from the property line. Okay, so that's why we're here today, because we need a variance for this fence that extends not just, it's not just a fence that might be right up, but against the pool, or 20 feet back. But, you know, again, the difference between the 26.4 and the 47 feet to the pool, there's a 21-foot patio that's now been created, self-created by the applicant.
Uh-huh.
That's, this fence could be that much closer in the backyard, and not as, sticking out as much-
Okay.
Okay?
We, we stand-
Part of the issues that we're looking at.
I understand that. We stand by our analysis on that, and we think it supports the granting of an area variance. When you weigh imbalance in the test that's under 267B. Fred, do you want to speak on the?
Yes, I mean, there were discussions, and we met with the code enforcer and the town attorney on a monthly basis. And for quite a bit of time, there was some dispute as to what the code said, because in the original violations, there was a mention to side yard. And, and that didn't, when, when I looked at the code, I didn't see that as being a violation. Also, we did have a permit to put the pool, and per the building department's directions, it was not to proceed the front of the house.
Right.
So the front line of the house is what we were guided by. The fact that the house is turned skewed to the property line is how it resulted, being less than 50 feet, or shorter than the front of the house. So our guidance by the building department was to not proceed in front of the house, which we did. The discussions continued month to month, and I know that it was important from the building, from the code enforcer and the town attorney, that we complete this project and put a fence up. I have here, and I, I'll submit this into the record, this was one of the summonses that we received, and it talked about imminent danger and the importance of putting up the fence. We recognized the insecurity feature of having a fence around the pool, and we proceeded as quickly as possible to complete that portion of the project. We thought that was, whether it was agreed that it was in front of the house or not, there was an existing permit for the fence in the exact same location that was there for over a decade, as far as I know. That was well over there for a decade. Another permit was issued. The code enforcer did state that, that it required a variance. But I thought I was working in concert with, or incorrectly with finishing the project, because of the things such as you have to finish the project, you have to fence it. And it was after the project was completed that we received a whole list of violations and codes, and things that had to be addressed at that time. That's in the narrative. This is the imminent danger that we were pressed, get a fence up, get it secured, get it around the pool. We acted accordingly, and finished that as quickly as possible.
Okay, so you put an above-ground, you have a permit for an above-ground pool?
Yes.
An above-ground pool does not require a fence?
Sure does.
Okay? No, it doesn't.
It requires a four-foot-
No.
Not above-ground pools.
Not above-ground pools.
It already has the four-foot.
So you had a permit, I agree with you, you had a permit, legitimate permit for the pool. Didn't require a fence. The problem is, when you created the patio and built up the ground, the earth, around the pool, and you created, your above-ground pool became an in-ground pool. That's when you created the imminent danger of needing a fence, so that somebody could not just run right into the, run right from the patio into the pool. So it is self-created.
Yeah, and I, I get this impression that something's being told to you that you don't interpret the way it's being said to you. When they say, what you're doing needs a variance, that means what you're doing is not legal.
Oh, we're entitled to relief, we're entitled to-
Not to keep doing it, not, part of it, you keep talking about how the neighbors can come in, and that's part of it. But isn't the biggest part of it is whether the hardship is great, self-created or not?
No.
Are you ignoring that part? Now, when he's told-
Dan, microphone.
You need to stop, this requires a variance, and he keeps doing it in contravention of what the law is, because he decides he's going to build it up and now needs a fence. That's an issue, isn't it?
And Dan, before you speak, hold on, the building inspector just gave, handed us a picture of, of the pool in 2016, where it's not, it's a, it's an above-ground pool.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to share this with the board members.
Self-created is a factor in an area variance. It's not something that would preclude the granting of an area variance, as opposed to a use variance. That's well-established case law. It's one of numerous factors that you should consider.
That's what I said, it's one of the factors.
But the overarching standard is the balance of the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the neighbor, neighborhood, or the community. And, and, and when you, when you weigh and balance those factors, none of them are dispositive. It's, we're not seeking a use variance, a use variance. So even if, if you, we accept your argument that it's self-created, it's just one factor, and it doesn't preclude the granting of an area variance.
You don't accept it despite this photographic history of what, when-
I have not, I haven't, I'm not, I haven't seen what you looked at. But the bottom line is, things get built, and they get variances after the, afterwards. That's, that's fairly common, okay?
When the, when, because people don't know, and we take that into consideration.
Right.
There's, there's, the law says that, you know, you're supposed to know what's going on. Everybody's charged with knowing the law. And there's certain things you know you can't do. You can't go into somebody's house and steal their stuff. When it comes to zoning, yes, we understand. Not everybody knows that the, the shed size is a, was 100 square feet, now it's 144 square feet. So you put something up 160 square feet, are we going to go crazy? No, we're not going to go crazy about that. But when a town's going out and talking to somebody, because they're doing work, saying, you know, what you're doing is not proper, and you keep doing it, how much does that raise the factor about self-created?
Mm-hmm.
And then when you come here, and we say, well, look, we'd like to work with you, but we got some suggestions, and then you say, well, we really don't like those suggestions.
I, I, I didn't say that, I said, I wanted to-
You did, you didn't comply with it.
I, I said, we want to talk about it, but we want you to hear from the neighborhood.
Okay, but also, you know that part of our job is to look at how we can mitigate or reduce the variances needed.
So let's talk about that, okay?
If you put up a four-foot fence, you'd be in compliance. We wouldn't even be here regarding the fence.
That's something we talked about several times during our reviews.
Okay, but the, the, so the, the fact that he put up a six-foot fence-
Is what requires a variance.
The two-feet difference is-
Well, not only is it six feet, but it's two feet above the ground. You raised the, you raised the ground, you have an above-ground pool.
I, I know, but the retaining wall is a-
Sir?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have an above-ground pool that starts out four feet above the ground, and now it's level with the ground. That, that means four feet of fill was brought in at least one part. You have at least two feet by the front of the house, now you have a six-foot fence. I think two plus six adds up to eight. So when we say bring it down to four feet, we're really being generous. Because you, you can't put up a four-foot berm, and then put a four-foot fence on it, and say, well, it's only a four-foot fence. So we're working with you already.
Okay, but I mean, your, your, your code says retaining walls are excluded from the height calculation.
We know that.
Okay.
We're not-
So I don't consider your math-
Well, I think it is when you're trying to get to a certain height. And how you build your height takes into a certain consideration as to what's going on in this situation.
Mm-hmm. I recognize what's being said here, in that we, again, the initial code violation was a side yard, the fence in the side yard required a variance. When I read that section, it did not require a six-foot fence in the side yard. So my understanding was that was the side yard, until I came across 194-100, which started defining that there are two front yards, and started looking at that. So, again, with the permit from the building department saying that that fence at that location was acceptable, led me to believe that a, a new fence to enclose the pool would be acceptable at that location.
Well, I think the original fence was much closer to the pool than the existing fence that you have now.
That fence is exactly where-
Or it was in the side yard.
But it was, it wasn't, it wasn't elevated.
It wasn't elevated, but it's in the exact same location. It was 15 feet from the pool, and that's what I measured and held.
But it's also just essentially one straight line across, and it doesn't go back. Now you have the whole extra side, both, on both sides of it.
Yes, because-
So you have created at least 16, I'm just assuming it's two panels. At least 16 feet of white extra fence on the one side, and, you know, on, on the other side as well.
The other complication was that the, the pool was, even though it was submitted as an above-ground pool, was supposed to be half-in, half-out. That's what the builder had promised us. It was going to be a half-in, half-out pool with one side to be in the ground, and then the other side to be out of the ground with the topo of the, of the property. So when that, then, when that didn't occur, we pursued the pool builder for quite some time, until he evaporated, and we weren't able to correct how it was placed in the ground. So the hope was that we would have one section of the pool at, at grade level, and the other section outside. That was our original hope, and that was our original project. With the complications of how it was placed, tried to design something or build something that would have been acceptable, and within what we had requested from the building department originally. And I knew that maybe amendments to the original permits were going to be required, but not that variances were required. Again, I, I thought, when I read the code for a side yard, it wasn't necessary that a variance was required. When it became apparent that this was being considered the front yard, then I realized that a variance was necessary.
So when you thought that amendments to the building permit may be required, did you go in and tell them what you're going to do, where it was going to go, and ask them? Or did you just assume that and not address it?
The pool was placed in plan according to what we-
Not what, you said, after you got it there, and the builder didn't do-
Yes.
What you asked of him, you thought amendments to the building plan may be necessary.
Yes.
Did you go in before you started all this and say, this is what I need to do now, because they didn't do, they didn't install the pool the way I wanted. I am going to put in four feet of fill to bring up half the sides around the pool, and I'm going to be extending it out to-
20 feet?
20 feet.
21 feet.
And this is going to be, now have flagstone or whatever you have on top of it, and then I'm going to put a six-foot fence around the outside. You went in and got an amendment to your plan to show all that?
No.
Okay. They went out and told you that you needed variance, you continue to do the work.
The fence location was placed per-
Didn't ask that question. After they told you a variance was required to do the work, you didn't stop, you continued to do the work, you didn't go in and say, well, this is what I want to do, give me amendment to my building plan.
That was, that would have been with the building department, not the zoning board.
Right.
Did you do that?
That's why we're asking, did you do that?
No, because there was nothing, I'm, I'm sorry, if I could, I know you, I could sense, but there was, there wasn't a requirement to go to the building department to change it, other than, yes, that half of the pool was being leveled out, and a retaining wall was being introduced at that point. But a permit is not required for a retaining wall, and it wasn't required, right? So would, would I have to amend and say that this is now an in-ground pool? Yes, I mean-
I don't know, does it require engineering, I don't know. Does it require engineering to fill dirt in around an above-ground pool? I don't know.
No, the pool is-
Is that safe, will that collapse? I don't know. Did you go in and ask? I would go in and ask the building department, does something need it? Not that what I would do is relevant here, it really isn't. I'm taking your own words. You're telling us something, you're making an argument, and you say, I thought an amendment may be necessary. But you didn't do it. And when they told you, this isn't correct, you need a variances, this isn't allowed by the law, you still didn't go in and say, this is what I'm going to do, can I do it? What do I need to do this? You looked at the law, didn't understand it, apparently didn't get the assistance of an attorney then to say, can you go through this and explain it to me? You did what you wanted to do, despite the inspector telling you, you need a variance to do this, you can't be doing it. That's the issue. And now, we're trying to work with you, we certainly want to work with you.
And the issue that-
But we can't just keep getting arguments saying, no, 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 no.
The issue that this board has is that this, yes, this is your property that we're looking at right now. But the discussion and the decision that this board makes is a potential impact on multiple properties in this town. That's part of what we have to consider. Okay, so, is there anything else that you wish to?
Not at this time.
Yeah, to your discussion.
Let the neighbors see, and we, we, you know, we can talk about it after the neighbors see.
Yeah, is, are there any more comments or questions from board members?
I just had one, one comment. You had spoken about the visibility at intersections, and you weren't aware of what that is. If you look at the code at section 194 dot 99 dash 99, it will tell you what the limitations are in terms of height and distance from, from the street lines. So you'll be able to get a sense of that, if you do, in fact, want to consider putting some planting on that side near the driveway.
Okay. I'm sorry, what section of the code was that?
194 dash 99.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, so I do have a number of letters, I will read them into the record. We'll start with the one you just handed us, not dated. Dear zoning board, we understand that Joanne Morgan and Fred Pena have requested certain variances for their property, included variances for the new fence and the camper parked in the area next to the driveway. We feel the fence looks very nice and does not detract from the appearance of the neighborhood. The camper is parked in the most logical place, and tucked behind the driveway as much as possible. We have no issue with the fence, camper, or shed, as they are placed now. We hope you will grant the necessary variances. Joseph and Carol Corcello on 1 Kane Drive. Again, an undated letter. Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pena, our neighbors residing at 2 Kane Drive, Swornville, New York. Joanne and Fred's property is adjacent to ours on Kane Drive. Our home is directly behind theirs. They told us they requested a variance for the fence around their pool, and another variance to keep the camper where it is parked in their driveway. We are writing to let you know that we think the fence looks very nice, and in no way offends us. It appears to be a high-quality fence that was professionally installed, and is very nice to look at. Where the camper is parked in their driveway is not a problem for us. It is inconspicuously tucked away in a manner that does not bother us, or detract from our views from our property. If it were parked in the back corner of the opposite side of the park, property, then it would be visible to us from our deck and from our pool area. Where it is now is not a problem at all. As neighbors living directly behind Joanne and Fred, we both support, we support both variance requests for the fence and the camper, and hope the zoning board will grant both variances. From Anthony and Christie Falcone. Jaded January 4th, Town of East Fishkill, my name is, sorry, I'm not sure if this is Phil or Lil? Hold on, let me go right back to your list, because that's probably where I'm going to get it.
There's a, there's a typewriter, they're in order, there's a cover sheet with the names-
So John, is this John Denihe?
I think so.
Okay. And I reside at 14 Kane Drive? Yes. My home is only two houses down from the Morgan-Pena residence. I understand that there is some concern regarding the fence around their pool area, and a camper parked in the driveway. I'd like to say that I have absolutely no concern or problem with either of these issues. I'd like to further state that the Morgan-Pena family are a lovely family with great pride in their neighborhood and community. Dear Town of East Fishkill, we are writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pena, our neighbors on Kane Drive. They told us they have requested variances for the fence and the camper. We live a few houses down from their house. We have no issues with the fence that was installed. We think that it looks very nice. It in no way detracts from the appearance of our neighborhood. Regarding their camper, the camper is parked in the driveway, like most campers are parked in a residential area. It is parked in a spot that is not visible to us at all from our house, and is tucked away in such a way that it is not visible unless you turn around to see it. We hope that you will grant Joanne and Fred their variances that they have requested. This is from Darlene Dennis and Arlene Giber, or Gelber. There's a footnote, January 11th, to, oh, that's to them, sorry. Okay, Dear Town of East Fishkill Zoning Board, we are writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pena, who live on our road and are our neighbors on Kane Drive. They told us they have requested variances for their pool fence and their camper. Our home is also on Kane Drive, we pass our property multiple times a day. We think their fence is beautiful, it is obviously a high-quality professional fence. It does not cause a detriment to the appearance of our neighborhood. Regarding their request for a variance for their camper, we support the request as well. Their camper is parked in the driveway, like all other campers in our neighborhood. It is parked in a spot that is not visible to us. We would have the opportunity to turn around, and, we would have to completely turn around to even notice it. By the time we drive by the house, when we leave the neighborhood every day, it is not even visible, because it is tucked in so far. There are many other properties in this area with camper trailers, and quite honestly, a lot of junk. Joanne and Fred work very hard to keep their property nice, looking nice, especially since it is on the corner. We hope that you will grant both variances to them. This is from Dorothy and Joe Visconti. Excuse me. Excuse me. To Town of East Fishkill, this letter is in reference to our friend and neighbor Joanne and Fred on Kane Drive, Stormville. We believe the fence looks nice and does not take away from the appearance of our neighborhood. Also, that their camper is fine where they have it, where they have parked it. This is from Jim and Mary Doherty. To whom it may concern, I reside across the street from the above property. This is Joanne and Fred Pina, Two Kane Drive. There is presently a white fence on one side of the property and a camper toward the back or side area. I don't see there being a problem to the appearance of the area. And this is from Charlene O'Neil and Hugh O'Neil at One Kelly Court. To whom it may concern, we are writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina who are neighbors residing at Two Kane Drive, Stormville. Joanne and Fred's house is directly across the street from our home. We've been neighbors for over twenty-two years. We understand that the fence they constructed around their pool has been presented for a variance to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We are writing to inform you that we think that the fence is aesthetically pleasing and really quite nice. We in no find, in no way find the fence offensive or out of place in our neighborhood. Furthermore, we understand that the camper that is parked in their driveway is also being considered for a variance. The camper is parked in such a way that it is tucked away from the front of the house and not at all offensive. If it was parked in the back corner of the opposite side of the property, it would be far more visible to us from our house and much closer to Lee Town Road. As neighbors residing directly across the street from our residents in question, from the residents in question, we support both variance requests for the fence and the camper and hope that both variances will be granted. This is from Allison Gerald McGregor, four ninety Lee Town Road. Dear Town of East Fishkill, we are writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina who we understand have filed to the zoning board for variances for their fence and their camper. We understand that there is concern about the fence they installed around their pool. We are writing in support of our neighbors who installed a very nice fence around their pool, which in no way offends us as neighbors. Our house is across the street from their property and the fence is directly across from our driveway. We think the fence looks very nice, it is very professional and elegant, and in no way is a detriment to the neighborhood. Additionally, we understand that there has been a variance request for the camper that is in their driveway. The camper is not visible to us due to the angle of our property to theirs. However, if the camper was moved to the rear yard, it would be very visible to us. Currently, the camper is tucked away on a section of the driveway that is not visible to us at all. Most families that own campers keep them in their driveways. We hope that the zoning board will grant the requested variances to our neighbors, Joanne and Fred. This is from William and Carolyn Santa Masseo, four ninety-four Lee Town Road. January fifth, two thousand and nineteen, Roger and Marie Young. Dear Board Members, we are writing with regard to the appeal made by the Pina family for the two specific variances. The first request is for the fence around their pool, the second is the camper in their driveway. We have lived on Kelly Court in Stormville for almost thirty years. When we moved to Stormville, Joanne and her family were already occupants of Two Kane Drive, a property we passed numerous times each day as we made our way down Lee Town Road. In those early years, Joanne, her husband, and their children could often be seen working in the yard to maintain its welcoming appearance, mowing, raking, planting beautiful flowers, and keeping the plantings of children aesthetically placed and well-maintained. Even though the hardship of a devastating cancer that eventually took the life of the young husband and father, the property never lacked of maintenance or lost appeal. Joanne and Fred have continued to work at maintaining their property and creating a space that fosters the bond of family and the joy of township, friendship. We have spent countless hours in defining, in defining a design for their pool area that would allow for privacy and complement the natural beauty of the property. They have succeeded by laying a beautiful stone foundation to the fence, which beautifully punctuates the original stone wall outlining their property. One cannot help but drive by and be grateful for their efforts and creativity in honoring the natural space. If you have yet to drive by this property, we humbly ask that you take the time to do so. The appearance is not something can be conveyed in numbers, maps, or sketches, and a picture is only worth a thousand words. You need to experience their handiwork on this site. With regard to the Pina's request for a variance to have their camper in the driveway, we can honestly say we are quite surprised. Campers of all shapes and sizes dot the driveways in Stormville. It's part of the life and culture of our small town. We are not in the McMansion area of Duchess County that affords luxury vacations. We are a simple part of town that relishes an outdoor getaway with family. Campers and driveways tell that story. We have to believe that this is simply a mistake or oversight and as representatives of East Fishkill, you understand that and will certainly approve this request for variance. Finally, we are trusting you will seek the truth about this situation and in doing so will unravel the miscommunication that has apparently led to this appeal. We are confident that you will then be able to grant this appeal for variances and avoid any need for such appeals in the future. This is from Roger and Marie Young. January fifth, two thousand and nineteen, to whom it may concern, our names are Maura and Vincent Crawford. We reside at Twelve Kelly Court, Stormville, for the past twenty-six years. We are proud of our home, our neighborhood, and our community. It is our pleasure to write to you on behalf of our neighbors and friends, Joanne and Fred Morgan-Pina. As long as I have known Fred, Joanne and Fred, they have always taken great pride in the appearance of their home, both inside and out. The outside of their property is always well-maintained, manicured, and the landscape adorned with beautiful flowers and shrubs. They even maintain the rock wall, which I believe is the property of the town, weeding it from the poison ivy and other weeds, just so that their property and home will reflect their high-quality standards of taste. Therefore, it came to, as no surprise, when they added the exquisite rock wall and fence to enclose their pool. This addition to their home has not only enhanced the beauty of our home, but has added a touch of class and elegance to our entire neighborhood. It is absolutely beautiful. Also, we would like to have it known that the small camper that Joanne and Fred have in their driveway in no way distracts from the beauty of the outside of their home or our neighborhood. If it did, Joanne and Fred would be the first ones to remove it. The camper is small, compact, no larger than an SUV or large truck, and always kept clean and parked on the side. I myself feel that it is just another accent on their personalities, family life, and love of nature, and all things beautiful. It is our utmost pleasure to submit this letter and are available to answer any of the questions the board may have in the future. As I said earlier, Maura and Vincent Crawford. And then last, February, dated February twenty-fifth, I am writing on behalf of Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina's property at Two Kane Drive, Stormville. We have no problem or concerns that the two variances they are applying for would be a detriment to our neighborhood. The fence that they put up is very appealing and adds a certain charm to the neighborhood. The white makes it look classy. The camper they keep in their driveway fits very nicely in the side spot, and there is never anything lying around it that would make their property unattractive. We see no reason why they should not be able to receive the variances. From Kevin and Kathy Radigan at Ten Kelly Court. So those are the letters that we've received to date. They are now in the record. At this point, with no further comments or questions from board members, I would like to open it up to anybody here who wishes to speak for or against the various appeals from Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina at Two Kane Drive that we've previously been speaking about. I just ask that if anybody does speak, that when you're done your comments, if you could please print your name on the clipboard on that table so we have it for our record.
Print? You don't want it written?
I would like it printed.
Yes, dear.
How are you, John?
I'm fine. It's very unusual for me to be on this side of the table, but I am here to support Joanne and Fred. I go by their house every day, many times a day. I've watched the progress going from a pool that was half in, half out of the ground to a beautifully landscaped and fenced-in pool as is today. I do recognize, as being a former board member, that, yes, there is violations. Obviously, there's concerns from the board about the different things that need to be I know Fred has tried to address them as best he can. Sometimes, it just gets difficult. One of the things I was wondering, though, is when we talk about screening in front of the property, what are we talking about? Ten-foot-tall trees? Twenty-foot-tall trees? I mean, what's going to actually screen that area? I mean, does the board have any idea?
I don't think it has to be twenty-foot. If I, yeah, we don't tell people what they need to do.
Right.
But if you're driving by in a car, your eyes are what? Four feet above the ground?
Yeah.
Or maybe six feet above the ground?
And-
Walking, your eyes are what?
Do you-
We had discussed this-
We did.
Yeah, we had discussed it.
Excuse me, Mr. Aziz, I know you discussed it. Excuse me. I understand that. I understand it's not the board's position to make recommendations, but I'm just confused because, you know, looking, you drive by there in a car, an SUV, a small car, actually, and you're looking at a stone wall, you're not looking at anything else. I mean, that's what you see. I mean, pretty much. And you put some trees up, I mean, the expense and cost and tree, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. I would hope that the board would see in their kindness and their hearts to extend the courtesy to the Pina and Morgan family to grant this variance because for the many letters you read and the many neighbors behind me today, tonight, you will find that, well, we're a very tightly-knit group in this neighborhood. We enjoy each other's company. And one of the greatest highlights of dinners is going to Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving at Joanne's house, where I get to cut the turkey. Yes. Anyway, thank you for your time. And I know how difficult it is to make these decisions. And I do know, sir, that sometimes a little bending of the willow is okay. Thank you.
Thank you. John, are you going to print your name?
No, he's not. He's going to write it. He's not going to print it.
Remember, I'm old.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Marie Young. I live on Kelly Court. It's a pleasure to address this board, and I think you can see by all the folks behind me, we are a tight-knit, very supportive neighborhood. I mean, we raise our kids together. I'm sure you have similar neighborhoods, so you know what I'm talking about. So when somebody's doing any kind of construction on their property, we're all there. So it's not only just about Joanne and Fred. We feel it as a neighborhood, because we've all been there to help each other do things from time to time. So I've been listening to all of the commentary. I haven't heard anything before this. I wasn't listening to any of the other meetings. But I'm listening to the commentary tonight, and I'm trying to figure out, at the end of the day, what is the real issue here? Because there's a lot of numbers thrown around, variances, there's a lot of stuff being thrown out. So what's the real bottom line issue? And one of the things that keeps coming up is about the aesthetics. We keep going back to the camper in the driveway. It's not about the camper in the driveway, it's not about the fence, it's the aesthetics. Does it look okay? That's the bottom line. And I think that the number of letters that you've received clearly says, "We're okay." And the people that are driving by there every day, "We're okay." I don't know what more we could do to say, "We're okay with the aesthetics." The camper, the jungle gym, whatever it is, "We're fine." So could we take that issue and put it over here and say, "No problem with the aesthetics, we're done with that." So put that on the side. That seems to be one of the underlying issues. We've settled that, I feel. That's been settled by your comments, even at the beginning, you said it looks fine. So that's one. Second thing I think that's coming up is the timing on when the variance got, was requested. I think that's another thing I keep hearing over and over, that there's some, James, right, there's some angst about, "Why didn't you go and get the variance when you were told to get a variance?" I think, I mean, I work with brothers that are working construction. They, I mean, I'm not deeply involved in it, but I do know from conversations, if you're starting on a project, you're going to have to get a variance on that. We hear it all the time. You hear it all the time, you're going to have to get a variance. People are trying to manage priorities, "I'll take care of it later." It's a very, very common practice. So if Fred's not getting the variance like right away when somebody first told him, I don't think that's that unusual. I think that's a normal reaction. "I'll take care of it." Oftentimes, people aren't getting the variance until they sold their house. I think you come across that quite a bit. It's like, "Oh, we're going to sell the house, we better go get the variance now." And the piece of, the sheds, whatever it is, has been there for twenty-five years. So I think that's what we're down to. And I'm just, I'm really asking sincerely, these people have been through a lot. They've been through a lot. They're good people, they're genuine people. So let's, can we consider that? We solved the issue, it's not a problem of the aesthetics. Can we come to some kind of reconciliation around? Maybe Fred wasn't as timely as you would prefer him to be about asking for that variance. Can we have forgiveness and grace around that one and say, "Let's move forward and let's grant these variances?" Humbly ask the board to please do so. I thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Young, can you please? Print, sorry, print, I know.
Thank you.
Forgot, thank you.
My name is Anthony Falcone. I live at Eight Kane Drive, directly behind Fred and Joanne's house. Fred and Joanne have been great neighbors since I've lived there. I bought the house in two thousand and thirteen. I've had no issue whatsoever with where they keep anything, how they keep everything. They usually keep everything in order. Just sitting here listening tonight, it seems like a very tense process. I don't know how it all played out in the beginning, but it seems like there's a lot of tension between all parties involved here. And I just hope that cooler heads can prevail. Everybody take a breath, look at the issues that are on the table. And I hope that you guys grant these variances to Fred and Joanne. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there any reason to keep the public hearing open? I don't believe so.
Another one.
Oh, okay. No? Okay. Whoever wants, closing reserve?
Yeah.
Hi, Chairman and board people. My name is Roger Young, and I live on Kelly Court, which is just the next road down. And I just have a few comments to make. One is that I think that, as we all agree in the neighborhood, there's no problem with their appearance. They're very neat, orderly people. I believe what they're doing is very safe and welcoming to the community. I believe they're very hard-working people, that they're always involved in fundraising and giving back to the community. So we really support them very much. And whatever we can do to help you to grant them the variances, that's what we're here, to support them, honor them. I've lived there thirty years. Like everybody else, I go back and forth by their house, walking, driving, and I've never been offended at all by anything they do. They're very hard-working and neat people. So we support them.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none?
Is any, last one?
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the requests from?
We have some comments.
No?
Good evening. Kathy Radigan, I live on Ten Kelly Court. I just want to say that I've been, I've been living there for twenty-six years. I've known Joanne forever and Fred. I believe that they try their best and they do a great job of keeping their property so nice, and we always talk about it in the neighborhoods when we get together with everybody. I have been living with, I talk to Joanne often, every day, and the stress that this has been causing this family, it's just, I could cry because it's just, they're such good people, and they're trying to do the right thing, and they're trying to do it the right way. Sometimes, yes, as Marie had said, if you don't get the variance done right away, people do it afterwards, but they're just trying to make their house a home for everybody, even for us. Like we said, we go up there every year, and they do a Friendsgiving dinner. We all go up there, and we celebrate each other in our neighborhood. So I would really hope that you could please grant them the variances that they're asking and make everybody else happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we, I have a motion?
Okay, before we close the public hearing, I'd like to make it part of the public record that part of the application, we did receive the building permit number 34526, which was issued, which is dated October 8, 2014. And the word description clearly says, "24-foot round above-ground pool. Plot, plan, and information attached to office copy." There was a first building permit that was attached, and then a second building permit was attached, which was building permit number 34530. And the word description says very clearly, "Six-foot as-built fence in rear yard. Plot, plan, and photos attached to office copy." So this was of record from 2014, and now we're talking about 2019. So there's a lot of, construction has been done since these two building permits were requested and issued, and I do not know what additional permits are outstanding on this particular property. And that's what I'd like, to make it part of the public record.
Okay, thank you. Does somebody wish to close and reserve, please?
Close and reserve.
Motion? All in favor? All right, so we are not gonna issue a decision this evening unless, yeah, did you have anything else you needed to offer?
No, I mean, I think, you know, you closed the public component of the hearing if you still want to...
Can you go up to the mic, just for this part?
If you still want to talk about, you know, the issues with, that you raised?
Is there anything new you have to offer?
Well, we submitted a landscaping plan. We realize that you're not, you, some people don't seem to be pleased with it, but we did submit a plan. So it's a, it's a reference to discuss things. So it's not like we're in a void. So if you want to talk, we can talk. We don't think landscaping is necessarily gonna be effective. And we, as you heard from the neighbors, no one really has any objection. No one thinks it's detrimental to the neighborhood. No one thinks that it's a blight or visually obtrusive. And I don't think that, because I've been out there myself. So I don't know what else there is to say, if you want to talk about...
Is there anything new?
You have like a counterproposal, but we submitted a proposal.
Well, we don't make counterproposals.
Okay, so we submitted, we submitted a proposal.
Okay.
And if anyone has any questions on it, wants to, you know, you have the right to approve or deny or approve with conditions or whatever you do.
Yep.
But we did submit a proposal.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
We do have 62 days to issue a decision.
Okay.
Hopefully, we will have it ready for next month, but...
Okay.
We heard additional information. Just to be technically correct, I renew the motion to...
Well, it wasn't any new information, though.
I know. Just so it's all part of the record.
I was trying to see if there was anything new.
I'm gonna renew the application to close the public hearing and reserve decision.
Second?
All in favor?
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
All right, so our next public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, would you pull the board on a close of public hearing?
Pardon me?
I said, "All in favor."
Yes.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
My hearing age, word on.
That's okay.
Okay.
I don't mind somebody keeping me honest, John, that's fine.
Send this back down.
All right, item number four, Appeal 3899 Mortensen. Tanya Mortensen, 11 Americana Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 29-foot front-line variance for a proposed 24-foot by 24-foot attached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi.
So we've had a chance to review your application twice now. Thank you for working with us on some of those issues.
I have no letters. I'll plant the trees.
But again, just to summarize the discussion that we've had, you already have a garage with your house, but you've looked to add another garage. You originally approached us with a design, a hand sketch, that was not to scale and everything else. It was like only 14 feet from the property line. You then, working with your professional, came in with a, you know, I think it's 21 feet from the property line. It came back. We had a discussion about detached garages not belonging in the front of the house. You now created a breezeway to connect it. It is no longer a detached garage. So...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, exactly. One of the things I do want to bring to your attention again in doing a site visit is, people tend to park, it appears, on that side, like, not necessarily in the driveway, but along the, they just pull on the whole lawn over there?
Oh, yeah. That's why we need the garage.
Okay, so if that parking is gonna continue, I was gonna ask about landscaping.
Well, we're putting, I'm putting the trees down the fence line that we talked about.
Okay.
And then it will continue alongside of the garage.
Okay, so that it's going to...
Yes.
Kind of prohibit the people's abilities to be able to continue to park like that? Okay. I appreciate that, because it is, you know, it just made your property just not look as nice as it could.
Exactly.
Okay? But again, in keeping with the previous discussions that we had, the materials that you're looking to use are gonna match your house. It's, you know, it's really, actually, it's gonna be providing you more privacy for your pool that's behind there. And that was part of the reason that was prohibiting you from, you know, putting that, the garage further back, was you do have the pool on the property there. Because the front of your, well, you're on a corner lot, so you really have the two front yards. To move it, we did discuss with you moving it closer where the other garage are, but you really were concerned about its impact to the visual effect of the front of your house.
Right, so we just moved it up a little bit to attach it to the porch there.
Right.
But I did have one question.
Sure.
What, so I have two front yards because I'm on a corner. Where does the backyard begin?
Wherever you want it to begin. Seriously, you get to pick your, in essence, you get to pick your backyard.
Well, I think that's where...
When you have more than one front yard, so...
That's where the question was about it being, you know, we went from not attached to attached because it was in the front yard. So if it's behind the house, is that the backyard and it can be detached? I mean, I've attached it, I'll do what needs to be done, but if you follow what I'm saying, it was always behind the house to be detached.
It was, but because of the corner lot, you, and this board actually had an interpretation request regarding what is, you know, what is front yards.
Right, that's why I wondered, where does the backyard begin?
So in essence, for yours, it could start with the physical rear line of your property, but as long as it's starting at the end of the front yard. So you need that front yard in from...
That's as clear as mud, right?
Yeah, I know. You kind of have to look it up by a picture, you know?
Yeah, no, I just was trying to...
But because of your pool, you couldn't physically put it there anyway.
If you were to move it to the back corner, all the way in the back, you'd have to run 100-foot...
Right, driveway or something.
No, 100-foot breezeway to attach it.
Oh.
So it doesn't, I, that's kind of, we're kind of not really...
You're on a corner lot, and your house sits here, right? So you got the front of the house and the front of the house.
Right.
You get to pick, is this your backyard?
Right.
Or is this your backyard? Then you have the others' side yard.
The code actually allows you to do that.
But you have to be behind the front line of the house for any of those things. Understand what I'm saying? Does that help?
We actually did have one property in before us that has four front yards.
Yeah.
Okay? That house really has such limitations on what it can do anywhere.
I guess the question that we don't really understand is, if it was in the backyard...
Does it have to be attached?
It doesn't need to be attached, is what you said, or it's...
Right.
Right.
And we can, we always considered that it was in the backyard.
Was in the backyard.
Because it's behind the house.
Right.
But it's not...
But you have to think about where the streets are.
Right.
Right, and that determines your front yard.
No, it was in the front yard of that. You have to be, so this is your house again.
But it's, so it's not the physical front of the house.
So you have a street like this, right?
Okay.
So this is your house. Anything that extends along this line is a front yard, and anything that extends along this line is a front yard.
Is a front line, that's what I was saying.
And yours was over here. It was behind the house in terms of the extension, but you, no, the line goes this way, not behind your house this way. So you have this little...
Take your words.
L-shaped behind the house, but you get to pick if it's your backyard or your side yard.
That's, okay.
But it has to be in that little space. And with your property, especially because it narrows as you get back, you have very little back or side yard, yeah.
Well, they actually have a pretty significant yard, it's just not easy to get to.
Yeah.
It's right, from Americana, you could get there, but you probably have your septic back there.
Right.
You probably have, you know, there's, I think you mentioned some topography issues.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so we've attached it.
So, but we do appreciate your, your working with us. It did take a couple tries, but the idea was really that, you know, at the end of the day, I think you're gonna have something that's gonna blend with your house much nicer. So any comments or questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
Yep.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Tanya Mortensen, 11 Americana Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 29-foot front-line variance for a proposed 24-foot, 44-foot by 24-foot attached garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And?
All in favor, aye?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
You're gonna read it, we have to say in favor, right? We didn't all go aye, but...
No, no, you close, yeah, okay. This is Appeal number 3899. Applicant is Tanya Mortensen. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied for the above-stated variance, and the zoning board of appeal finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the garage will be attached to the dwelling with a breezeway, with an asphalt roof, and have components matching the existing dwelling and proposed garage. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. As this is a corner lot, the area, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse impact, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request.
Is your second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Kara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Now you'll just deal with the building department.
Have fun.
Thanks. I thought you opened the public hearing.
Yeah, we opened and closed.
I thought you did, yeah.
I wrote a record of it, we opened and closed.
That's what I said, we didn't say aye.
Okay, so I had previously announced at the beginning of the meeting that we had no items five, we had no, any, there would be no action tonight on items five, six, seven, and nine. So we are actually on item number eight, which is Appeal 3900 McGimsey. Thomas McGimsey, 42 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed eight-foot by 20-foot pool deck extension pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through what you're asking for.
Yeah, so basically, we built the deck to within required regulation, and it's really small and cumbersome, and we just like to extend it to make it more usable for the whole family.
It's above-ground or in-ground pool?
Above-ground. We were gonna build up the size of it, and I'm really glad I didn't do that now.
No, no. Okay, so the pool is already in? You have your permit, you have your CC, everything is done?
Yes.
Okay, so the pool is operational? Because we have a hand-drawn survey. We usually ask for a survey. And it appears that one side of the pool, or one side of the patio, I can't read what you've written here, is 26 or 25 feet?
The, well, the pool is 26 feet away from the property line.
Okay.
That's what it says.
So is that the side that you're looking to put the deck on?
Yeah, so the deck would extend over that, seven or eight feet closer to the property line.
Oh, that's much better. Do I have, I guess if I turned another page, I have that, thank you. So why do you have to go on that side? Why can't you go on the other side?
Because the slope of the hill, the topography of the ground, would require us to do fencing. But it's not, so it's so steep that when you, if you move the deck, otherwise, we're actually digging out. Fencing's the wrong thing, because there's gonna be fencing around the deck.
That's your sideline of your property you're getting close to?
So we're, the grade as you move towards, away from the property line, you start getting into 25%, 30% grade, and you're, I'd just be digging in, digging in. I'm getting closer and closer to my septic tank. And what'll happen is about two feet above the deck floor, you're gonna have the land, the ground come into it. It's just not a feasible way to do it.
Okay, so because you are going so close to the property line, do you have a survey? When was the last time your property was surveyed, when you bought, bought the house? How long have you owned the house?
I've owned the house since 2006.
I guess another way to ask the question is, how do you know that pool is actually 26 feet away from the property line?
Well, I mean, so the neighbor below us has the, his area staked out. The neighbors to our right, or left, no.
If you're facing the house.
Neighbor to our left.
You're on the street facing the house.
Yes, so the neighbor behind us has his property staked. I'm going off of that. And then our neighbors to our left have a chain link fence.
Okay.
So we, we're measuring to the other side of that chain link fence, not to my side of it, but the other side of it. And that's where I'm getting the 26 feet from.
How big is your pool?
24-foot round.
Okay, because your pool looks like it's bigger than the 26-foot side yard that you've drawn. That's why...
No, I, I understand what you're saying. I mean...
So what...
I'm a finance guy, I'm not a...
The last thing we want to do is give you a variance and then find out you need to, you needed a bigger variance. Okay, so...
Right, I mean, so, so just so you're aware, the deck is not coming out any further than the pool. So the, so the way, the deck is offset from the center of the pool.
Yeah.
Right, and, and basically, the, the farthest edge of the deck towards the side we need the variance on is going to be right at the edge of the pool. So we're not going any further than...
And that, is it going out the eight feet from there?
Yeah, but it's because of the angle, right, so...
Right, no, no, I get that, but why does it need to go out eight feet? I mean, I get four, I get maybe five, but why eight feet?
Because when you, see, in order to cut, it's just, it's just the angle of everything to make it all work, to make it all usable.
You're a finance guy, you're a numbers guy, you're not...
Yeah, because...
I can see this.
No, I mean, I don't, again, like, if, if you went out four feet, like, okay, four feet's helpful, but it isn't... I mean, we have two kids, we have, they're one of 20 grandchildren, two of 20 grandchildren, and we have big family get-togethers, and we just, you know, we'd like more space. If we're gonna do the variance, I mean...
So when you put a chaise lounge up there, when you put a box, a pool box up there, and you have all the accessories associated with it?
You put a 10-foot umbrella up there, and it takes up seven feet all the way around.
You have a little table, okay, so...
Yeah, I mean, you can't, I mean, to be honest with you, you can't do much with a...
No, I, no, I agree, eight feet's not much, but it's, it's going into that side yard.
I understand.
I mean, we, there's also, they have the chain link fence. I also have a row of hedges that's six feet high that were standing on the deck, you can see above it, but the deck does, the deck's not really gonna reach above those hedges, so...
And the reason you can't go to the right side of your pool is because of the drop-off? Or is that where your septic is?
The topography is so steep that you'd be digging into the hill to build the deck.
Focus up.
Correct. The house is higher than the pool.
So I, I'm really, I mean, you do have to know where your property line is. You can't go by where somebody else put a fence.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I'm having really difficult time understanding and appreciating your request because it's just hand sketches, and I would like to have a survey, you know, updated survey showing where everything is. Because right now, I'm, yeah, so I would, I would definitely request a survey and or photograph supporting what you're saying, because...
Unfortunately, we get situations where people go by something like a fence, and it's not nearly correct.
When you bought your house in 2006, you had a survey done. What you can do, the easiest thing to do, is go look and see who did that survey, and just ask them to do an update to your survey.
And how do I find that information?
It's the corner of the survey?
But again, the...
It should be stamped on your survey, who did it?
Your abstract would show it, your title, your attorney would...
Title report should...
Title report would show it, your attorney would know it, your bank would know it. The Dutchess County Records Office, Clerk's Office has the record. So there's like multiple locations where you can find out who did the survey when you bought the...
And the actual survey, if you have, if you have your physical, would have a stamp for the surveyor.
Okay.
There are licensed surveyor that does this. So that's why you can trust what, well, generally speaking, you can trust the information that they're providing you, okay?
This thing here that you have a copy of?
Oh, here. It's a long time ago. This actually is a...
Maybe it might be too old.
Survey that had a stamp on it, but it looks like it's from 1960-something.
Yeah, but I don't have that copy. Oh, this, okay.
It was the page before they had drawn it.
Oh, yeah, the page.
1983, it looks like, maybe.
Is that the one that the bank used, or you don't know?
When you say that people behind you surveyed their property, are there pins there? Can you find a pin?
Guys behind us? Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, again, I didn't witness them putting the pins in, but yeah.
You can find that pin.
He's got the stakes with the pink ribbons labeled property line, so...
But that's a-
Yeah, but those can move.
Yeah, is that a, is that a wooden stake?
I'm just saying, those stakes support the measurements. I'm not saying, I can't speak to their accuracy.
No, I'm having another question. Those are wooden stakes that you see with the ribbon on it, or metal?
I thought they were metal, but again-
And if they're metal pins put in by a surveyor, they should be accurate. If it's just something he put but near a metal pin so you could find it easy, then you actually have to find a metal pin.
Yeah, I mean, he's-
That should be accurate, although we've had several cases recently where-
Kids move on.
Surveyed lines seem to move, even after, yeah, I don't know, they've had it one survey done, and then they go to sell their property, and they find out the new surveyor puts it in a different line.
But if you drew on here, yeah.
If you can find a front pin, if there's one there, then you would be able to run a rope from one pin to the other, maybe.
Well, well, I don't think we're gonna have, I don't think it's gonna be on the other side, but-
But did you, you drew on this, this is your survey, so all you have to do is pull out and see whose stamp is on here.
Well, it's at the bottom, it says 1983, if you look at it.
I know, but it should still say who did it.
Yeah, you might be able to track it.
So we might be able to track down-
Looks like Ray Kilmeier to me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and also when, you know-
Oh, Raymond, yeah, I see the name, okay.
Yeah, and, and also, um, when, um, the other, um-
Records now.
Surveyors pick up the older surveyors' records, and so sometimes they have it on their computer database or someplace, so, so-
That's a great, do we know who has Ray Kilmeier's records?
Carlson was the original surveyor for the whole subdivision.
Okay.
This is more recent.
All right, well, you have, you have, we have to get an updated survey, okay, because, I don't know, have you talked with your neighbor about this? The one whose property you're gonna go a little closer to?
Yeah.
They're supportive of this?
Yes.
So I would even ask if they have their survey, if they can tell you who did theirs, because again, somebody who has that, that one, if you can't get yours, somebody who has the one next door might also be able to, cuz they probably did some-
Yeah, you can find out whether you put that fence up by a survey, or whether you eyeballed it and said, "I like it here."
Well, then, yeah, no, they didn't put the fence up, the previous owners did, so-
But again, maybe they have something from the previous owner or whatever, so you could tell, or maybe there's a survey showing what fence is. A lot of times people put their survey in a couple feet, I mean, their fence in a couple feet, so they don't necessarily put it on the property line. But, yeah, we can't grant you a variance for a specific sum really without knowing where your property line is.
Right.
I'm sorry, did you say the septic was on the right-hand side of the pool? Where's the septic?
Well, if you're facing the house, yes.
If you're facing the house from the back?
From the road.
From the front.
From the road, okay, looking at the septic.
From the opposite side of the pool.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, like the, the pool itself is like right up to the leach fields, like, and we don't have any further to go. Like, and again, so the property goes this way, towards the pool? So going the other direction is just, it's-
A shed, yeah.
Physically not feasible and certainly economically not feasible.
But it's not here. Oh, it is here.
Yeah, do you have a shed up there by any chance?
A what?
Do you have a shed?
Where?
At the corner, back corner.
I took it down.
Okay. Is there a play equipment back there?
Uh, there's a swing set, yeah.
Do you know where that is, how far in from the property line?
Looks rather close.
Uh, no, not exactly, I don't know the exact distance.
Because, wait, you think the pool is 30 feet from the property line? That swing set's supposed to be 25 feet in from the property line? So your swing set may have to move, or we're gonna need a variance for the swing set, too.
28, pool's 28 feet.
Okay, but if the pool is here, and the swing set's all the way back here, and here's the property line? Is the swing set movable, or no? Or you'd like to keep it where it is?
Uh, there's not, I mean, so you can't come forward towards the house away from the property line because of the slope and then the leach fields.
You might need to get a variance for that.
You're gonna need a variance for the swing set, too.
So if you have somebody like Mountain survey it, they can tell you where that is, and you get a variance for that at the same time.
Yeah.
We like to clear everything up, you can't have a violation or something else.
No, I, I, I understand.
And this way, you don't have to worry about it later, so we'll get it done.
That's why we hold these things, to make sure everybody's all set up for it.
Okay.
So-
You need to get it tracked down.
Just help me with, with the steps here.
You need a survey.
Yes, I need, I need a survey.
First and foremost, either track down who did yours, and find out who has his records.
When I find out my swing set's not in the right place, then I'm gonna have to go file for another variance for the swing set.
You can just come in and write it, add it on to your existing application.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just add it on, because we, we discovered it, it's something we wanna clean up, okay? So in our review of your application.
And then when you do the amendment, we will know how far it, it's from the two sidelines.
Right.
The back, backyard, whatever, so when you do it, it's just a, a sentence, and then, so this way, when we review it, we will know exactly what variance you'll be, you're requesting.
Does your neighbor have a pool in that back corner, too?
I really don't wanna say anything, right?
No, no, I don't, no, I'm just asking, when, when you have a pool, it generates noise. And so if your neighbor's got a pool right there, too, then you know what, then, he's not, he's gonna be less likely to object, because he's gonna be making more noise. But when you're moving that deck-
There, there are three pools-
Eight feet closer, you're bringing that noise closer to his property.
In the four, in the four yards that are catty, catty corner one another, there are three pools.
That's fine, I, I'm not-
Those children owners will behave as you're-
He's not before us, I'm not, I'm, I'm just asking from the noise perspective.
No, they, they have a pool, and it's, and the pools are very close to one another.
That's, so he's less likely to have an objection to your bringing the party closer to his property line if he's got a pool right there as well. That was my point.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm, not my, I don't, I don't live here, it's not my issue. Okay, so you need a survey, okay? If you can't, I, I would ask your neighbor if he, who knows who did his survey, again, if you can't find yours, um, if you can't find the records for yours.
And maybe you'll find out his fence is four feet onto your property, you have all kinds of-
So, when-
And then you'll come back to us when you have that survey.
When they do the survey, though, like, I mean, they're, what you're saying is, you're, I'm gonna have them come out and measure, that's what-
Yes.
They, they should, when they do a survey, they should give us distances from everything on your property, any structure on your property, which includes a place at that.
Right, and, I mean, so, I mean, the, the point is, you cannot access very easily that midpoint in the yard to do this, right? Like, so there's, those bushes are there, right, they're talked about, big, large hedge. As we close in the close of summer, there's going to be poison ivy back there, so one of the reasons why we try to do this in the off-season? I, I mean, how do, how do you go in there and pinpoint where that spot is?
That's-
That's their problem.
The surveyors, this is their life.
All right, so then I need to specifically ask them to put a spot midway up between the, because usually I only see people mark off the corners.
Well, yeah, they'll only mark the corners, but they'll tell you, they can measure, once they have their line, they could tell you whether you're actually 28 feet from your property, or whether you're 30, or whether you're only 12.
25 and a half instead of 26.
So basically, I should tell them what I need when they're doing the survey?
They'll know, but yeah. And if you're paying it, you might wanna tell them to actually pin it, so you ever have another issue, you know where your pins are. So, and then if he wants to pin, if it's, I don't know what your topography really you can do, you can always just draw a twa string between two pins against a straight line. But you got, need some way to accurately measure it.
Okay.
Okay, when you get your survey, you'll come back?
Yes, to the zoning department.
Yeah, well, you'll come see Pam again downstairs.
Right, okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just making notes, needs a survey. Okay, and last, we have appeal, item number 10, appeal 3903 Davis. Douglas Davis, 6 First Street, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 33-foot rear line variance for a pre-existing 10-foot by 18-foot detached garage, built in 1920, a 28-foot front line variance for a pre-existing enclosed porch, also built in 1920, and a 22-foot front line variance for a proposed 16-foot by 26-foot addition pursuant to sections 194-121 and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi, afternoon, evening.
So First Street, you're right behind Frankie's.
Yes.
Okay.
So small lots, right, these houses were built back in the 20s.
Yes.
They were built, you know, on building lots, third of an acre. The garage has been there, I think, as part of the house was built, and back then, they didn't do variances, building permits, et cetera. So it's there. Uh, I'm looking really to build an addition on the side of the house. Uh, I think the, I, I can't meet the front line variances that they have now, just-
You're not going anywhere closer, though, right?
No, no, nope, it'll be even with the front of the house, it's not gonna extend out where the porch is. It's consistent with the, you know, rest of the houses in the neighborhood, nothing really out of line.
Is it for a garage, or what's it for?
No, it's for an addition to my house.
Okay, but it's, so it's for bedrooms, or it's?
Uh, it's to extend my kitchen, my kitchen is very tiny, uh, right now, I can fit about one person in my kitchen, so it's a little tougher on holidays. So I'm gonna open up, really extend the kitchen and a great room on the side of the house.
Do you have an architect or somebody that you're working with, or?
I do, yes.
Oh, so you have some plans?
Yep, yeah, they should be, you, you should have copies of them?
No, they have copies of the survey, not that much.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have copies of a survey that has been hand-drawn in, and so that's why we're questioning-
Okay.
What the plans are.
Right, this is the, this is what I got from you.
Okay.
And then I just photocopied this and gave it to them.
So yes, I, I have plans for the house, uh, they were drawn by, by an architect, I have my builder here.
Yeah, it would, again, if, when, what we would like to do in the next, because this is a review, the next, uh, uh, meeting would be most probably a public hearing. So at the public hearing, we would like to see the actual plans from the architect, or the surveyor, or whoever is putting it together, so that this way, we know, in sort of hand-drawn, proposed addition, specific, you know, proper survey.
Your neighbors are gonna wanna see, what is this gonna look like? So if you have a front elevation of a house, what are they gonna see?
Yeah, I have all that, I thought they were provided, okay?
Well, when I, when I went to file the paperwork, they said, "We don't need the plans right now, just the survey."
Yeah, just bring the-
Well, you didn't need it for the building department, it's time.
But we can bring them, that's no problem, I, I'll drop off copies at the office.
Do you live here now?
I do.
Okay, so have you talked with any of your neighbors about doing this?
Well, one of my neighbors, the house is, is vacant.
Okay.
Uh, they're, they're, you guys just-
Oh, is that the one that we gave the variance to recently, okay.
Yes, yes, so he just started that one.
Okay, good.
Today, as a matter of fact.
Spring is coming.
I've talked to my neighbor across the street, they're, they're okay.
Okay. I mean, obviously, neighbor support is very important, so, um-
Based on where, yeah, based on where your house sits and your property, it makes sense if you're gonna put an addition to put it there.
So is this a two-story addition?
No, one story.
One story, okay.
Single-story addition.
Okay.
So your current house is two stories, so you're just adding just one?
Correct.
One floor.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, because once we see the, uh, the, the plans, it'll be just easier. Now, you do have a garage in the back.
It's in the back, correct, detached.
And that's only about 17 feet from the back, so that may also, may require a, is it 15 feet or-
I think that was included in part of this variance.
Yes, yeah, it's already on here.
Yeah, Pam already caught that.
Okay, she caught it, okay, I, I-
It needs a 33-foot rear line variance.
Oh, okay, so it's the-